The investigative hearing of the House of Representatives on the alleged financial recklessness in the NDDC enters its fourth and final day. The Minister of Niger Delta Affairs has honored the summons of the committee. So also has the Managing Director of the NDDC, who last week walked out on the committee after refusing to testify at an investigative hearing headed by Representative Onlubu Miojo, who has been accused by the Commission of criminal activities, including hijacking projects of the Commission. The Committee Chairman begins by unexpectedly recusing himself.
I'm not on any revenge mission, and as far as I'm concerned, there's been, there is no personal feud between us as an institution or me as an individual and the Intermanagement Committee. I'm not on a mission of vengeance. I wish to humbly appeal to my colleagues to recuse me from presiding over this particular meeting.
Like the chairman did mention.
The Deputy Chairman of the Committee takes up the role and the hearing continues.
The Central Bank and the Accountant General's Office cannot change the figures in one week because they stated under oath in the Senate Adoc Committee hearing that eighty-one point five billion was spent from October two thousand and nineteen to thirty-first of May twenty twenty.
Point of order. Thank you. At EMD, we, we had a presentation from Central Bank. We had presentation from the Accountant General of Federation. We have presentation from BPP. Just tell us from your own side.
Post one to section eighty, eighty-one of the Constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. You cannot touch a dime, you can't spend a dime, except in a manner prescribed by the National Assembly. So I will expect you, because I've published your submissions, sir, and I've also sent a letter written to you. So for us to be able to flow seamlessly, you know, so that everybody will be on the same page. I expect that you should lay your approved budget where you derive the strength to spend the money you are, you are telling us.
The Committee begins to question the extra budgetary spendings of the NDDC.
Where you said that a whopping one point five billion is to take care of ourselves. Is there any budget line to authorize that take care of ourselves in the budget of twenty nineteen that we approved for you?
It was not one point five billion, please. The figure is shown clearly.
Tell us, tell us the figure.
It's one point three two.
Now the question, the honorable man, Honorable Huxman, is asking you. Where did you have in the budget line in two thousand and nineteen where you derived that power to spend that money? That's the question.
I'll, I'll provide that answer for you. I will check, I don't want to lie on that oath. I will provide the answer for you.
MD.
As the questions continue to pour in, the MD of the NDDC begins to lose consciousness. He is then evacuated and taken to a hospital. While the Committee takes a break.
The point of order noted there to, to the fact that we should go, we should step down for thirty minutes is hereby sustained.
When the hearing resumes, the Speaker of the House joins and states that a medical team from the National Assembly is in touch with Professor Pondy.
Let me just say he went, he was a little bit under the weather. We have, I have inquired and I've told my doctor and the medical team in the house to follow up in the hospital where he has been taken to and to make sure we are kept abreast and up to date as to his state of health.
The Committee will be relying on the testimonies from the four-day hearing and most importantly, the documents submitted to prepare its report to be presented before the entire House. Terry Ikumi, Channel's Television News.
We cannot close down Niger Delta Development Commission because of the fact that we are doing forensic audits. That, that the, the, the NDDC plays a vital role in ensuring the peace and security of the region. And ninety percent or more of the resources of the country on a monthly basis comes from there. If you close it down in totality, all you have would be chaos. And you have a lot of, not just militancy, but you have a lot of insurrection. So it is important that people who have gone to court, people who genuinely did jobs should be paid for their jobs. So for me, I'm not against it because, uh, uh, who are even the greatest beneficiaries? It's two people now. Because if you look at your, your chairman.
Okay, okay, Honorable Minister. Honorable Minister, that's okay, that's okay.
No, can I ask you that question? What is the benefit that the National Assembly is benefiting from?
It's okay, it's okay.
Are you asking me the benefit of National Assembly?
Yes, you just said.
I just told you that we have record to show that most of the contracts in NDDC are given out to members of National Assembly, but you don't know about it.
It's okay, it's okay.
The two chairman, the two chairmen can explain to you. That is why I was a member, I was a member of the NDDC Committee.
It's okay, it's okay.
Wait, you were a member of NDDC and lots of, wait, you were a member of the NDDC in the eight assembly? And are you telling me that lots of jobs were awarded to you as a member?
This is a problem. That's why I said you must change.
You have the right to accuse people. Then why can't you bring it, bring up the people that.
One of the chairman.
If you were not awarded a contract, then why are you coming here that you are aware that you were a member of the NDDC and lots of contracts were awarded to this? You said I'm not, I'm not aware. I'm telling you that. Bring up those names.
May I inform my honorable sister that that is why we have to change.
Honorable Minister, Honorable Minister, please. It's okay. That is okay. That is okay.
But let me explain.
No, it's okay. It's okay.
Let me explain now.
It's okay.
You must not allow the two chairman to hide the budget every year.
It's okay. Up your mic. It's okay.
And she, she.
Up your mic, Honorable Minister.
You are like me. I was a member like you.
All right. So those are some of the issues that we plan to, we will highlight this morning on the program, different perspectives really on that matter. You heard about the, uh, they, what happened to Professor Pondy and the possible medical scenario that may have played out. Even though we tried to ask him, look, could he, well, he's an expert, seeing what transpired, that was his professional view. But yes, soon we'll get to the crux of the matter.
The issues that many people will want to really understand is, look, was that really, did that really happen? Was that because, you know, what the word on, even if you look at the front pages of the, of the newspapers, people are calling it drama. Is it drama really? Or is this something that really, really is supposed to be giving us concern? And it may interest you, Chamberlain, to realize that in twenty sixteen October, actually, the Senate Committee on the Niger Delta was wondering, they, they were looking at some provisions of the NDDC Act in twenty sixteen. Interestingly, Senator Akwabio was a member of that committee at the time and they tried to do some review of the NDDC Act, some of the provisions. But none of them touched on the leadership or the recruitment process of how the board is appointed, the chairman of the NDDC.
Did they consider it an issue at the time?
It didn't seem so. I mean, I, I was really very surprised that that didn't come up as an issue, you know. But you know, maybe a number of other little, little things. So I was wondering, you know, when I saw that report, how come that, you know, issue wasn't made such an issue at the time? If it was, uh, an, an issue at the time, maybe the provisions of the, of the NDDC Act would have been, you know, adjusted to fit into that bill at the time. That didn't come up. Now that it is coming up, you know, the, one of the things that you would remember that we've been asking people is, the people that have been getting killed. All the people on the board who have in the management of the NDDC have always been people from the Niger Delta, all of Niger Delta extraction. If we really want development in the Niger Delta, are we going to import people from outside the Niger Delta to do it?
Well, the question also is, is it just about the people who are on the board? What do, does the establishing law say? So no matter who is on the board, you can do things beyond what the NDDC Act stipulates.
Well, yeah.
So if, even if whoever is there, if some think that there's a structural or, you know, problem legally or the way the act says, then they may justify their argument. But if not, then they could say, well, if you have people, if those positions are peopled by people in the region, why have they not been able to make the impact? So those are all the issues perhaps that, uh, look, it's an age-long challenge. It's something that's been going on for a while.
Yeah, but what if you say, you know, we need to go stricter censor with the provisions of the IMs, with the provisions of the NDTC, NDTC Act. It may seem then that the NDTC Act is kind of on suspension right now because the IMC, the Intermanagement Committee of the NDDC isn't a provision of the NDTC Act. It's one of the things that even people, you know, the IYC and the number of other, you know, interest groups are saying about the whole thing. So if that is playing out now, the question then is, uh, is that one, is the NDTC Act in full effect? Or is it on suspension now until this whole forensic audit is, is concluded? And talking about the forensic audit, it would seem like, you know, is it really going on or is it hush-hush? Who are the people that are behind it? You know, how, how deliberate is it? How promising is it to deal with the issues that we are going through in the Niger Delta? As Senator Akwabio revealed, a significant amount of money come from the Niger Delta and we need to develop that Niger Delta region. Because this conversation has been on for decades, for decades, Chamberlain. And, uh, I remember, you know, it, so many people have lost their lives as a result of all of the injustice, if we can use that word, in the Niger Delta. Ken Sariwak readily comes to mind. All he was asking for was just for the environment of the people to be better. The fishermen can't go to the fish, to the fish farm simply because, you know, the environment is so bad.
Speaking of which, we have, uh, used to be his close associates of late, Ken Sariwak, Lede Mite. He joins us now. He's a former head, National Stakeholders Working Group of NITI and a former president of MOSOP. Good morning and thank you for joining us today on the program. Well, I haven't seen all that, that has played out and possibly will still play out. So could you tell us, what in your estimation do you think is really going on with the NDDC?
Well, I think that the issues in NDTC is structural and conceptual. I think from the beginning it was destined to play exactly the role it is playing now, which is to become a patronage agency of the presidency. I think that from the conception, I remember that our engagement with the then head of state, Abi Salabi Abubaka, led to the, um, Umpadet Decree of nineteen ninety-eight. That decree clearly stipulated charge that commission with developing the Niger Delta, I mean, sorry, the oil-producing communities according to the priorities set by the commission, by the communities. And now charged the communities to set up community development committees. And it was these projects that the communities chose that were supposed to constitute the project. When the civilian government came in of Mushogo Basanjo, that was immediately repealed and replaced with NDDC Act that now charged the commission with development of the Niger Delta according to how the priorities that will be set by the presidency, I mean, the federal government and the state government. And particularly in section, subsection three of section seven, that in carrying out those functions, the NDDC shall be subject to the control and powers of, I mean, subject to the direction, control and supervision of the president and command chief of the armed forces. There is a problem. From then, what you see is that the NDDC now became an agency of the president through which patronages are dispensed. In the case we have seen, in later years, you can find out that since this administration, we have had almost six, um, MDs within the four years. And there have been that penchant. Why is it that it's preferable to go outside the provisions of the law, to do things outside the law? For instance, there's no provision for interim management in the law.
All right, Mr. Mite. Before we go to that, uh, the IMC component, now the nineteen ninety-eight Umpadet Act, which you decree, which you spoke about, eventually repealed and then the NDDC Act came to distinguishing features. Well, that decree was, just as you said, they were to carry out our functions. The priorities were as stipulated by the communities. Now, the act then talked about as directed by, yes, the president, the state actors, as it were. But was, because even recently, not long ago, we have heard even some other governors have said, look, if you like, if you want development to come in, and paraphrase it now, saying, look, it has to be coordinated by establishments, that communities can't be the ones determining how the structure of execution of some of those projects should go. So can we really say that the nineteen ninety-eight Umpadet Decree, which was repealed, was achieving the purpose that the Niger Delta for development to come into the area?
Yes, I mean, what has always been the issue here is that the communities of the Niger Delta say, and in fact, most communities, that sometimes they are scratching their, they are scratching them where it's not itching. So how do you know what the communities want? And what that decree did is that at the local government level, you are now going to have a local government coordinating, I mean, community development coordinating committee, which is to now harness what comes from each of the communities affected in that local government. And then the states were also to key in. So what you see is was a bottom-up approach, not top-down, where people sit down and decide what they think are the priorities. How does the community, for instance, that does not need a roof, or they need a roof, then what you give them, sometimes you, you, you say that you are going to buy, uh, uh, what do you call it, a face mask for the police? How has that got to do with the, the, the communities that, that are affected? Each day people are dying because things are not done how it's supposed to be done.
I get your point, but what would you then say to those, the things? So what's the point of having those elected officials there? Because they were there to carry out those responsibilities on behalf of the people.
They, they, there is also the question, this were not supposed, the NDDC or, or were not supposed to go and struggle for space with what local governments are doing or what state governments are doing. They still have their own responsibility and that's why they always refer to it as an interventionist agency. And these are some of the things that we have coordinated, we have been saying over the years. I remember when I was chairman of the Niger Delta Technical Committee. We specifically made a, 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 a recommendation to the NDDC that they should focus exclusively on major and mega infrastructural projects in the region. Especially the ones that will do interstate roads or some of the things that will benefit the region. I mean, they, 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 more than one state. So every agency is supposed to have its own role. And the Niger Delta Ministry should also have its own role, not to struggle for space with NDDC.
Okay, so back to the point which you were trying to make, do you think that the IMC is part of the problem or the problem?
It is illegal. The first, it is illegal. There is a law in place that says there should be a board. Mind you, the history of the IMC is that at the time it was put up, the president had approved a board that had been screened and it was to be inaugurated. Then all of a sudden, we now had IMC, IMC. Why is it that this government does not want a structure according to law? In fact, there are times that they have even had a sole administrator or agency like NDDC. How, how, why is it that they are running away from? It is that they don't want to do the process. And let me tell you, Chamberlain, one of the things that they are not telling you in all this drama that you are seeing is that where did these funds go to? The truth is that every person you ask on the streets of the Niger Delta know that it is, these are all harsh funds for elections. These are funds that they use in doing elections and that is what you are seeing. That's why you see they give you figures that do not make sense. That's why they are going to pay four hundred and some to say they pay four hundred and something or whatever billions they are paying just to give to a consultant, to show them their own project. So these are things that every person knows, I mean, what, what, what the funds are for. So whatever probe you call it, if you like, do it, it's like someone trying to himself indict. So every person in the whole hierarchy, I think they understand what they are doing and the drama, I think, is, 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 is becoming nauseating to those of us who know the, the, the opportunity cost of all this is.
One of the things that you said earlier, I mean, it's actually quite troubling, the fact that, you know, we have a law that many people are not living by and that's again, very, very troubling. Well, you talked about the fact that the many people are not upholding the true spirit of the NDDC Act. Well, the part two, section seven that you read, if you look at the B, it talks about the, the, one of the functions of the commission. One of the functions of the commission being to conceive, plan and implement in accordance with certain rules and regulations, projects, programs for the sustainable development of the Niger Delta area. And it listed certain fields, transportation, roads, jetties, subways, health, education, you know, a whole array of, of things that should actually help to develop the sector, the, the, the region. It then begs the question of, is it a function of the law not being adequate? Or the people who ran the commission over the years not fulfilling the precise tenets of this particular section of the act?
I think the law has its own fault, as I've said, in the sense that it creates an opportunity to make it, um, a patronage machine of, 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 of the presidency and they have been doing a fantastically good job at that. But there is also the problem of those who are there about thinking of conceiving which projects actually matter. And that's why my preference and those of us who struggled for this was always for the communities to, to, to generate what are those programs. Not someone sitting down somewhere, I mean, what has, I mean, buying face masks for police, as I said, got to do with the development of a village in any of the Niger Delta regions. So those who are there, but let me add that it is not just those who are there, but those who are controlling the agency. Even whether it's from the president, whether it is located in the SGF's office, they are the people who actually control what is happening there. The act, as you rightly said, also has provisions for audits. They should provide their, their audited reports and they should, the audit should be in accordance with what the Accountant General or the Accountant General of the Federation directs and they should do it within his own guidelines. So what are those audits? Why are we going to spend billion to get something called a forensic audit? Why, why should we? There's no agency that exists, even a private company that does not have audited accounts from, uh, uh, maybe from external auditors that go and do it. When I was chairman of NITI, our recommendation amongst others was that there were several years that NDTC has not done its own audited reports according to law. What should, what has happened? So why are we reinventing the wheels? Another forensic, uh, uh, something? I, I think that these are the issues. But as I always say, the issues when there is some of these malfeasance, there is a crime, there is a corruption. Now who should we locate it for? With? Because all the things, the, as I said, this organization by law is subject to the control and direction of the president. And he is also the person who is in charge of those mechanisms to check corruption. The police, the ECC, the ICPC and all that is also at the top. So every power locates up there. How are these, how are the people here going to hold NDDC? Are we going to shoot them? So it is that someone who, where the bus stops is not doing his job. And the constitution, as I said, came from when you do not want to go according to law. You want to bypass the law and create either a sole administrator, um, uh, uh, interim management, not even a board. And that's where the problem is and we should not play around it. That's exactly where the problem is.
Can we exonerate, uh, indigents of the region who have occupied key positions in the NDDC from blame?
There's no question of exoneration. If you commit a crime, you can, you can be the main party that have done it or you are party to those who have done it. So if you sit down, if you are the conduit through which all these things happen, there's no question of that. But what I'm saying is that if you are the person responsible for checking the things, what have you done? When you say, because there is in existence already reports that say all the things you are hearing now, even what you have even had on the floor of the National Assembly is enough to activate of the criminal sanctions that are in the books. But because all those who can do it or should do it know that these things they are telling us is just, um, it's a smokescreen for money, harsh funds that were used for elections that they were all beneficiaries of. So that's why you are seeing all this sort of drama going on. Nothing will come out of it if there are those who have that tool.
Nowhere here, that Chamberlain just asked is around the, along the fact that from the very beginning of the activities of the NDDC, the idea was that everyone who has governed the NDDC, they have been indigents of the Niger Delta. And they are supposed to take responsibility that, look, this is my region and also ought to be able to do anything. But unfortunately, the, we, obviously the people of the Niger Delta haven't taken, haven't had as much benefit as they, they, they ought to have. So the question then is, shouldn't we, members, indigents of the Niger Delta, be asking their own sons and daughters who have governed this organization for so long with little or nothing to show for it?
The question of asking then, people have been asking, people have demonstrated on the streets. But why will someone stop to commit crime? Is that there is the reason why you commit crime, you stop to commit crime is because there are sanctions that will attach to it. And those sanctions is that you are arrested and prosecuted. So who has the power to arrest and prosecute? And that is the issue, is that, it's not that we not be saying, what I'm telling you now, I've said it several times over the years, that some of us are getting tired of talking about this, this is, but who is listening? So when you speak, I'm not saying what they are doing, that they have allowed themselves to do these things that you are seeing. You see people who are supposed to be very, very intelligent people, professors, all that. And they tell you all these sort of stories that you are hearing. Even small children will say, are these supposed serious? And, and as I said, it is the opportunity cost that pays me. Because each day, people are not just fainting, people are dying because they do not have good water to drink in the communities. And that is the money that people will say they use to take care of themselves. That's the money that they will say that they use it to pay consultants to tell them where their projects are. And then you pay those contractors that you do not know where the projects are. That is the money that will have provided at least even malaria drugs. But we are not hearing of all these things and there is no sanction attached to it. Let me tell you one thing that I will tell you with from an anecdote, which I can tell you. When some of us are giving up on this thing, at the initial stage, I mean, there was times that someone who headed the NDDC, I went to engage and said, look, why don't you go do things this way and all that? And after a long, especially looked at me and said, let me tell you. I was sent here, the mandate the president gave me is to come here and empower people, the supporters in the region. If you know someone who, who fits into this, tell me. And that is what I had and I just said, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. And I left. It was then that I knew that all the matching orders that they always get from a good job is basically what you are seeing happening now.
And as we wind down, tell us then, what would you like to see changed such that they can achieve its purpose?
First, the National Assembly is not wasting time in all this. They should, they should, they should just amend the law and make it that bottom-up approach. That is what their work is primarily to do. That is what the National Assembly should do. Two, I think these are not issues that should be listed. If they have audits. If they have audits, yes. If not, don't waste money on any forensic audit. There are already ninety reports and other reports that will help. And any person that you find that have infracted the law should face the consequences of the law. And let NDDC be allowed to operate in a professional manner that it can see itself as an agency working with credible international development institutions and other places to develop the Niger Delta according to what the people want. I think these are the things that we think should happen. And a bar itself should be in place if it works according to the machinery that even have been searched by this law. It would be better because there are a lot of checks and balances. There are supposed to be governors advisory committee that should be able to help in the coordination of all this. Where are the governors in this matter? They are always bypassed for political reasons.
All right, Mr. Lede Mite, we appreciate your thoughts this morning. Mr. Mite is a former head, National Stakeholders Working Group of NITI. He is also the former president of MOSOP. Thank you very much indeed for your perspectives today.
Thank you.
All right then. We're back in a moment. Don't go away.